All right. Good evening, welcome everyone to the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 17th. I think we're getting another comment.
Yeah, point two.
Are you ready? Good evening and welcome everyone to the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting for April 17th. Can we have a roll call please?
Commissioner McGinn. Commissioner Lavra.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Vice Chair Beck.
Here.
All right, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any comments, thoughts? I know we had some emails that bounced this today.
Madam Chair, I'd recommend that we table the minutes until the next meeting. There was some discussion between one of our alternate commissioners and the chair on discussion that went on at the last meeting and since neither of them are here today, let's just hold off on approving those minutes.
I'd second that.
I don't think we need a vote to table, do we?
Do we need a vote to table?
Oh, big say.
Somebody says yes, let's take roll.
So we have a motion to table?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn. Commissioner Lavra.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beck.
Yes.
So, do we have any reports? We'll start down with Commissioner McGinn.
Nothing to report.
No report.
No report.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Just was at a great groundbreaking yesterday for Housing Hopes project.
Yes.
It's great to see that all that hard work come to bear and I was asked to join the board of the historic museum, so now I get to learn about history.
Wonderful. How many people were in attendance?
I'd say 100-plus.
Oh wow.
Yes, it was.
Excellent.
Too cold, the beer didn't get drank, but other than that, it was a great meeting.
Do we have staff comments?
Yes, Alan Giffen, Planning Director. A couple of items. First of all, next Wednesday at the warehouse or room of the Everett Station, starting at 6:00 PM, we will have an open house on the Metro Everett Subarea Plan and Zoning Regulations. There will not be any presentations, but we will have a number of exhibits and staff around to talk to people, get their questions answered, hopefully, and just get more information out. We did send notices out to every property owner within the Metro Everett Subarea, so I'm not sure what kind of turnout to expect, but this is something that is an important part of our public outreach so people can see what we've been doing for the last couple of years. Second item is for our May 1st meeting, at this point, not sure that we're going to have one. Tentatively, we will say not unless something comes up in the next couple of days, but we do not have anything on our docket or calendar for that date, so we'll confirm that by the end of the week. Last item, the commission's recommendation on the revisions to the marijuana land use regulations will be presented to the City Council in briefing on May 2nd in public hearing, third and final reading on May 16th. That's it.
Anybody have questions for Alan?
Okay.
All right, so it looks like we've had several folks sign up for citizen comments. Oh, and another one, and another one. Oh, this one's Metro. Thank you. So, I'm going to go ahead and apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. Howie Bargreen, could you please come to the microphone? State your name and address for the record.
Commissioners, my name is Howie Bargreen. Everyone mispronounces it and I've learned over the years to say bar like you go into for a drink and green like the color. That seems to work the best. First off, I would like to mention that I was on the planning commission in the county, so I understand your service. Thank you very much for your service. I'd like to talk just briefly about a property that my family's had since the 40s. I think my dad traded it for another property over on Riverside and it was zone B3 about 10 years ago. Next to me, the family that had a property for three generations wanted to stay industrial and so they were sandwiched in B3 industrial, B3. Now, that entire area is, looks like has been designated by the planning department to be zoned back to industrial and what I'd like to do is ask whoever I need to if we couldn't, our property, still be in the B3 like it has been and I'd just like to ask if my family can be treated the same as the Greenleafs who were allowed to keep their zoning. And I have written you a letter about that and I'd just like to show you one exhibit. So after we were zoned the B3 about 10 years ago, I had some architects and engineers work on a project which did go through preliminary, through the building department, the planning. And it was probably not the exact right time 10 years ago, but now I think is the time when we will be able to find somebody to build a nice development on this property that will fit in with the city and also bring in more downtown people. So thank you very much and I very much like you consider to allow my property to continue to be the B3 zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Bargreen. Next person, Salwick Porowski?
Porowski.
Sorry, Porowski?
I put the phonetics for it.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Swavik Porowski, Interurban Architects, 600 North 36th Street in Seattle and I have been honored to be invited to the developers forum and eagerly and very actively participated in it. At issue, as you're well familiar with, was the matter of being able to reach the ambitious targets that the planning department set for Metro Everett. The 25 floors with amenities, 15 without, that due to public pressure was reduced to baseline of seven floors. And then a scramble began on how to create incentives that would allow those ambitious initial goals to be somehow reached. It looks like the second draft, which I just had an opportunity to read earlier today, has achieved largely the height goals, or at least the possibility of it, through, say, contribution to the low housing projects or art projects for the city, generally city coffers being bolstered, or through the gold or platinum lead constructions, construction technology, which would be, which would put Metro Everett into this position of energy leadership. Those are very lovable targets and I cannot thank the planning department enough that they found a way to combine the public pressure with the vision of Metro. The one item that still remains, and it is extremely intractable, is that of design by decree. It's a little harsh, but I hope David will forgive me. The stipulation is that as the building grows up, it recedes back and back and back. And that style of sort of Babylonian ziggurat has been with us for 5,000 years, but it's no longer done. There is no metropolitan city anywhere and God knows I scoured all data that I could for current trends to see if, and understand it. It's a matter of shading the neighborhood property, but it really matters if the neighborhood property is a fifth-generation little farmhouse that somehow stayed inside the metropolitan area. They would, and their orchard will die in the permanent shadow. Reality is, like Seattle, like Bellevue, those big buildings grow gracefully and become a different kind of sculpture. What I hope that the planning commission will see fit to do is to remove the design stipulation in a letter that I sent to, addressed to all, meaning the developer forum, which was the planning department, deputy mayor, and 26 developers, or architects, engineers. I quoted not Dubai or Shanghai, the extreme edge of what Metro can look like, but Studio Gang, Genie Gang, a brilliant Chicago architect, creates ephemeral sculpted magnificent little works of art. Not little necessarily, but they keep the urban scale without becoming tapered. They keep the interest by being articulated, but not stipulated. Another one, Bjark Ingels from Denmark, Copenhagen, creating all kinds of sometimes bizarre shapes, but not by stipulation again. He plays, he reads the book as well as anybody and avails himself and his clients to splendid things like waste-to-energy station in M.A., Copenhagen, where people can actually ski on the roof of it. Those are fantastic little solutions, but it's because he is brilliant, not because there was a touch of brilliance in the code. The code needs to be fair, but should not stipulate design solutions. And I plead that you see that as a possible point of minor pressure. And I think that's probably all we need. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you. I have a quick question for Alan. So, we are receiving a number of comments. At some point, staff has gone to actually provide written comments to the folks who are providing, like a spreadsheet and a response in terms of what was done for the comments?
Yes, and we've been doing that and the latest went out this afternoon in response, I think, to your latest email to us, Mr. Porowski.
I wrote three.
Yeah, you've been keeping us busy and we like that. Appreciate your, appreciate your interest and feedback, but as far as comments that are received tonight, I would suggest that you allow staff to just take those back to the office, review those, and prepare some response that we would provide to anybody who's providing the comments and also to the commission at a future meeting.
Sure, and that was kind of the heart of the question I had. At some point, when we get kind of closer to the end of the process, we're going to get a spreadsheet of how staff responded to the citizens who actually provided written comments. Is that correct? Because we're seeing the comments, but we're not seeing staff responses.
Right, I think, yeah, we've been keeping pretty good track of all of the comments that we're getting and so, yeah, we can provide some type of document for the commission and for the public.
Okay. Thank you.
So, teach me how, I mean, how do you go from a single or a double-story resident and with these zoning changes, then all of a sudden we're five stories right next to it, or seven stories? You know, we, I listen to you, but then the folks that live on the other side of the street, I mean, how do you help that transition?
The plan that, even the original plan that the planning department presented to all, had a very, I thought, insightful transition from the low perimeter area going through five, seven, then 15, and possibly 25. Initially unlimited, but then in view of Payne Field bringing business and life to Metro Everett, wisely reduced to 25 so that would not interfere with the flight path. So what happens is realistically, there is no such thing as this contrast. You have the whole, from get-go, the plan was that they envisioned this kind of center core that would grow out of the business and residential needs, would grow organically upwards. That part was brilliant. Then came the pressure, not in my backyard, not in my city, not necessarily by people who lived there, but some people just want to be, I know a certain mayor in a nearby town who doesn't want to go over two floors. And I think that what happened is that the pressure of the, obviously customary understanding of what a city building looks like, classic two-floor podium and then up to five floors of wood construction, which is basically the practical limit by code, became a familiar to all default, default position, default starting point and ending point.
I'm going to apologize because we have other people that would like to speak.
Okay.
And I do apologize, but I think I completely understand the point that you're trying to make.
I have, I'm only here to answer now at this point. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your comments. The next person is Reed Shaki. Please state your name and your address.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Reed Shaki. My business address is 2716 Colby Avenue and I'm a planning consultant. Tonight, speaking on behalf of Russ and Jennifer Juckett, and you probably received a copy of a letter that we submitted this afternoon. And being a planner, I say in 12 paragraphs what it would take the ordinary person, probably three sentences, to say. So allow me to give you the opportunity to read it over prior to our next meeting. But the point that we are making in this letter is probably best to turn to the graphic that was submitted with the letter. And the request by the Juckets, in looking at that graphic, I refer to the, what I'll call the yellow area, which is urban residential. It's sort of what I call a carve-out. All around the Juckett's property, the proposed zoning is urban mixed-use. And pointing to that graphic, you'll see that the whole idea of Metro Everett is to develop a somewhat of a corridor between the transit center and then coming up into downtown so that somehow, someday, that the uses within that corridor between our transit center and future light rail terminus and the downtown is going to be brought together and integrated as far as uses and that sort of thing. And the mixed-use, the urban mixed-use, is intended to do what the title says, and that's combine residential, commercial, office uses, those sorts of mixtures, so that people, as they invest in this new Metro Everett Center, have that blend of residential, home-to-work, job sites, and that sort of thing. The yellow area, the urban residential, is oriented more towards strict residential and certainly preserving the strictly residential communities that are south of 32nd Street. The Juckett's point in their letter, or in the letter that I submitted, is simply that their property meets the vision of the mixed-use concept. Not only that, but the Juckett's property has been zoned for R5 with an office overlay for years and years. They have residential buildings, former residential structures, that are now offices and there's uses around them similarly used to be residential buildings, but have converted to office use. So you're sort of partway there with the R5 office overlay. One would think the next logical step under the Metro Everett concept would be to have that urban mixed-use so that that concept continues. That didn't happen. The current proposal is for urban residential on their property. And as noted, the urban mixed-residential seems to extend east and west for some distance with 32nd Street, sort of the southern boundary of that, before you get into the more residential areas. The Juckett's and me don't quite understand why there would be this carve-out, where former mixed-use office residential-type zoning, the R5, would all of a sudden become restricted solely to residential, not allowing them to do what ultimately they wanted to do with their properties, and that's developed that mixed-use flavor. And then, as I mentioned in the letter, and then I'll conclude, it's as practical of a concern as the fact that they currently have a pending sales agreement with a purchaser who, thinking that this was an R5 office mixed-use zone, entered into discussions and eventually a purchase-sale agreement with the Juckett's to in fact take their property and turn it into that R5 office overlay, were simply asking that that little sliver be extended that much further south to include the Juckett's property so number one, they conclude the sale, and number two, the city can meet its vision. So that would be our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie Severs?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to provide comment on the current Metro plan.
Could I have you just state your address as well?
For the record, Angie Severs. I'm with the Master Builders Association of King and Snowmish Counties. We're located in Bellevue. I also wanted to thank staff, Alan, Niels, and David for at least, I think it's been two years of work. I mean, we've been engaged for a long time and this is a dedicated staff. I want to commend them for their persistence because a year ago, I had a tough time engaging people in this conversation. And at the developers forum we had a few weeks ago, we had a couple dozen and some great ideas and some lessons learned out of it, too. The MBA represents nearly 3,000 businesses in King and Snowmish Counties. Very diverse in nature. Most, 85% or 10-person businesses are smaller, 15% are larger. Our goal, our members' goal, is to strive to provide housing for everyone who lives in the Puget Sound region, who chooses to live here. We are grateful to the City of Everett, staff, and the planning, all of you and your hard work and the effort for a vision for the city and for Metro Everett that we all can be proud to see realized. We appreciate the effort the city's taking to listen to constituents and work towards sensitive and appropriate regulatory frameworks that encourage investment here. These are core values that we share at MBA with the city. Working in a wide variety of municipalities and with various regulations, we can also appreciate the unique challenges and opportunities that the city faces with Metro Everett. There's a lot of placemaking that's needed here. One of the lessons learned that we can share from our experience in multiple cities is that these type of regulatory actions are best implemented when they're informed by economic and demographic analysis. It's strategic in nature, specifically the unique position Metro Everett has in the marketplace. The city embarks on a focused effort to attract a certain type of mid-rise and high-rise investment that's aligned with the regional growth strategy established by Puget Sound Regional Council. It's essential from our perspective that the city and you as a planning commission understand the economics of the investment here in Everett. Without any real economic and demographic analysis of these type of projects here in the city and context to what's going on around us, we may or may not attract what we want here. So, before, to assess the proposed regulations before you, it might help, the proposed regulations might help or hinder what you're trying to attract. So, from the anecdotal feedback that we got, there were some really strong pieces to it and there were some that you've already heard, comments that were limiting and undesirable in the staff. And just so you know, for transparency, staff has been very responsive to the comments that have been made and implementing them and following up with all of us. So there's really healthy dialogue taking place. In looking to this analysis, which may have been done by the city, I'm just not aware of any that has taken place or that's been brought forward and that can be part of a prospectus that's shared with businesses that inquire for opportunities here in the city. We'd be happy to recommend a number of independent and professional resources that can help inform that discussion, lessons learned, and support in eventual decision of this plan, in addition to the various comments that you've already received. From our experience, all cities struggle with this visioning process and economic reality of attracting this development. Understanding when and what factors need to be in place for desired new investment allows a city to focus its limited regulatory resources on actions that are appropriately timed and productive. These are long-term plans, but in absence of economic and demographic insight, they can become more aspirational, complex, and in some ways, they can discourage the very investment that we want to attract. For example, if the city seeks to attract a 10-story mixed-use development in a particular zone of the metro area, the underlying zoning and development mechanisms will reflect the ability to design to that standard without requirement to utilize incentives to reach the standard. However, if a developer wants to go higher in that zone, those incentives would be implemented to go beyond that. So developers are given the flexibility to meet what the city's, what their vision is and then enhance it, if so be. I think we all can agree that when we collectively take the step to change the regulatory framework to attract a certain type of investment, we all want to have a high degree of confidence that these actions, whether it's parking, there's been lots of discussion about that, setbacks, impervious coverage, the changes that we make will all support what it is we're trying to accomplish, both from a planning and an economic standpoint. I don't have those answers and I don't think any one developer has those answers. It's lessons learned from various cities, different types of development, and really specifically to Everett and what it has to offer and attract. So needless to say, on behalf of all our members, we appreciate the opportunity to have engaged with you over time and all of you and your council and your mayors over time. If you're interested in some references for consultants, we'd be happy to share those with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Rubenhurst?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to provide a brief comment in response to Ms. Severs' comments. We actually have had a market analysis that was prepared early on as part of our beginning phase of the planning. That information is available on our website and in some of the appendices of documents to the to the draft Metro subarea plan. The consultant found that our current regulations are not a hindrance to development, that really the challenge that we have is the market here in Everett. And, you know, of course, there has not been an economic analysis done on the land use standards that are in draft form that we've been sharing with the development community or other members of the public and the commission. But we'd be happy to review specific comments or take specific comments. It's not intended to, we're not intending to do a further economic analysis, but appreciate the comments from the master builders. If they have some specifics that they feel are unworkable, then obviously we'd like to hear those.
Thank you, and sorry. Jill Rubenhorst?
I apologize if I missed that.
Oh, you got it right. So my name's Jill Rubenhorst. I live at 2101 Baker Avenue, and I know with the regional growth that you have many things to consider, and it's really complex. So that's both exciting, I suppose, and a little bit unsettling or intimidating. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. There's a new housing development proposed at 16th Street in East Marine View Drive, and I'm really happy that it's coming because so much housing is needed. I know there's been a request variance for like 70 feet in height, and as I drove around looking for other buildings that seem to be similar in height, it seems like it's really out of character for that historic neighborhood. So I just wanted to share that thought. I know there are other meetings and comments that can be made, but I'm just trying to share in the process as best as I can. And then thinking about that, and I looked at the plans and saw how much pavement there is, I was like, oh, my gosh, that's so much pavement. And then a couple other things that have come together to form what I'm going to ask for was the headline where IKEA was maybe coming to the area, maybe not, on the top front page of the Herald. And they're a leader in sustainability and sustainable, you know, buildings, and I thought, well, wow, we really want that in Everett, not just the store specifically, but our new developments to have LEED certification and those other things that the Housing Hope Building that they just, you know, broke ground for. So what I'm asking for is that for the areas and development that are not inside these planned areas, like the metro area or the station or other segments of the comprehensive plan, that they're looked at to have some of these, you know, features of sustainability beyond, you know, kind of the curb appeal with, you know, walkable community and plants and trees and that sort of thing, that they actually have something that is sustainable. And again, some of those features like the new Housing Hope Building, because they're being put into existing neighborhoods, and one of the companies, Kroger, which is a large retail chain, which happens to be the parent company of Fred Meyer, their new, their goal for new development and remodels is 50% of them have zero waste. And I think wouldn't it be great if we had a goal for our new construction to have a certain percentage of those have these really good economic, environmental, and sustainable features in the building? So that's what I'm asking for, for Everett, to look at having a goal like that with the expansion in our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak at this time?
You should have information.
Oh, is this regarding Agenda One? Is this regarding the development code and the Metro Plan?
It's the Metro Plan.
Okay. We'll be taking public comment at the end of that. Right now, we're, sorry.
Yeah. I spoke with Mr. Juckett earlier, and I think that fits in with the comments that we've been taking thus far under the general public comments. So I think, I would suggest that.
My apologies. I just, I was, it said Agenda One.
Well, thank you. I'm Russ Juckett, and as Reed presented our information to you, he did an outstanding job of giving you the overview. Let me share with you what I want you to do. I want to go from R5 overlay to the urban mix, and why is that so? When I was your county prosecutor in 1982, I left office. I went across the street to Egernoff's office. That's 3110 Oaks Avenue. I practiced law there. I bought a building across the street at 3117. I bought the building at 3119 and 3115 during that same period of time. For 35 years, I've been practicing in that area. I saw the likelihood of the growth because the county courthouse is just half a block away. So that when we started to grow, we saw the application here in October of 2017, which basically set out where your urban mix was going to go, to 32nd Street. Yet for the area where the alley is, that goes east and west, that starts before you get to my property. Now, that alleyway seems to be a system in which you arbitrarily picked a location, but that's not so, because when you look to the west of the alley, there, it doesn't go all the way to Rockefeller and stop there with any kind of urban mix. It picks up what is called, and you may remember this, is Williams, Novak, and Hanson. They owned that property. That's the property on 32nd and Rockefeller. They're within the urban mix. So it appears to me that there's a little discrimination going on, where you have a property line that doesn't stop at the alley, but picks up Mr. Hanson's property. We are still across the street from 3110. Ms. Lorraine Black sent you an information letter, and under the first application, back when the design came out, I think in October 2017, she said, please include us. She's on the south side of the alley. Include us in the urban mix. We did the same thing in October, along with Mike Papadimitris, the owner of People's Shoe Repair. He says, let me join you with our mix. So we looked for the, basically for the planning commission to go forward and analyze it and come up with an answer that would incorporate us, but it didn't happen. So that's why we're here today, because we're saying, it doesn't make sense. Take a look at the only through streets, ladies and gentlemen. The only through streets are Oaks Avenue. That's the one I'm on. It goes north and south. The next street is Wetmore. The next street is Broadway. We are a through street. We're a busy street, and of course, you want to create a residential area out of us, and it doesn't fit. As I see it, and I asked Reed to put it in our letter, we feel it's punitive. For 35 years, we're planning this growth, yet now, planning commission has the authority to go forward and say, no, we're just going to make you urban residential. And for that reason, it doesn't make sense, especially when you look down the block and you see that another part of the properties on Rockefeller goes to 32nd Street. If you really wanted to use the alley as a boundary line, I suggest you stop going south on Rockefeller and stop at the alley rather than incorporating it. Again, we're a through street, and for that reason, I think we're busy. I think we fit into your mix for any kind of sales or commercial building-type application. So I'm here as Reed says. He says, as a planner, he may carry on and carry on. I'm just asking you for one item, changes to urban mix. Very simple, and it seems to fit, but if it doesn't, I would like to know why. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for speaking. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? We do have an agenda item, that there will be an opportunity to speak to that specific agenda item. All right, moving right along. Item number one.
We've got three items to present to you tonight, and they'll be presented by different staff members. First up, we'll have Dave Tyler talk about off-street parking and some proposed changes.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Tyler, planning staff, and I'm here to talk about code amendments related to off-street parking. You've seen the new draft standards that Mr. Stahlheim has put together, and there are a number of related amendments that'll need to be made to the Everett Municipal Code, excuse me, in support of that. And so my background is, on the implementation side, I've worked for many years doing land use project review, working with the public, working with developers, project reviews, basically implementing the code on a day-to-day basis. So I've got a vested interest in making sure that the code that we ultimately adopt works. So now, having said that, basically, the background and where we're at is, we've put together some draft parking standards. Again, Mr. Stahlheim's done a great job on those. He's done a lot with a very relatively little amount of time, and so we've got basically a whole new formatted set of standards that you've already seen and had some discussion on. And I just wanted to make some positive comments on what I've seen so far, because I think David's done a great job. And now, here's our problem statement, and that is that the current parking standards, not just the ones that are in the parking chapter, but that are in the rest of the code, are, they're very redundant, they repeat themselves, there are some inconsistencies in there. Many of the standards are difficult to locate because they're not in the parking chapter. They're scattered around various parts of the code, and you'll see in some further slides how many of those standards there actually are, and I think you have a matrix in your packet that kind of summarizes those standards as well. And then that's happening, or this work is happening against the backdrop of the overall effort to streamline the code. And that's something I'm really excited about, but when I got this assignment, I thought, great, we're going to streamline the code. Now, what does that mean? And so what I did was I tried to put together some sort of objective criteria for determining how we go about streamlining and how we're improving. So here, you could see some criteria that I put together on the left, and then just a brief description of what that means on the right. So duplication, we want to avoid having standards duplicated throughout the code and repeated. That allows us to consolidate and reduce the overall bulk and volume. We want a better organized code, which has a better appearance, is more user-friendly and intuitive, easy to understand. Well, relatively, it is code. We want a better user interface so that people can navigate through the code and find things more easily, and that includes making it easier to search online. And so I think one of the things that David has done is really taken that into account in terms of adopting various section headings, which are ultimately the searchable point in those section headings. So we put enough section headings in there to make sure that individual subjects in the parking chapter can be searched. And then we want consistency. We do have some areas where the code is currently inconsistent, and so this provides an opportunity to go through comprehensively and clean that up and make sure that different parts of the code, you know, sort of work well with other parts in the parking standards. So what we've done so far is to complete an inventory of code standards throughout the Everett Municipal Code. We've gotten input from other city departments, namely Traffic Engineering and Public Works, who also have a real interest in what we're doing, and that's because they administer standards that involve improvements in the right of way. We administer primarily standards that involve improvements on private property, and they meet at the property line. And so we need to have a seamless handoff between parking standards, on the one hand, and then public work standards that deal with street improvements, sidewalks, driveways, and so on. So we've had a lot of coordination with Public Works to make sure that the new standards fit in with other portions of the municipal code. A little bit more on that in just a minute. And then we've also completed an evaluation and analysis of the different code standards that are, again, scattered throughout the Everett Municipal Code. And that's really the matrix here that you've seen in your packet. This is sort of our visibility tool, but it's also very much a working tool that just sort of inventories all the parking standards that we could find on the left-hand side here. And you can see there are standards and references in Title 15, that's project review procedures. Then you get down to zoning, or actually Title 18, which is land division, there are parking standards there as well. And then zoning, which, when you look at this matrix, okay, lots of parking standards, but these are all outside of the parking chapter. So what does that tell you? It tells you we need to consolidate and relocate and eliminate duplication. So I counted, just for fun, because I'm kind of a geek, I counted 113 parking standards or references in the zoning code outside of the parking chapter. So this shows right there that we have a problem that needs working, that needs to be fixed. And then down at the end here, you see some other citations involving health and safety, as well as streets and sidewalks, which is Title 13. And then some other aspects to this matrix are, it's helped us sort of organize and group the standards by topic. If you look at the third column there, type, it tells you, okay, is it a process-related standard? Does it have to do with the quantity of parking standards? Is it a reference? We have lots of references. Has it to do with parking location or driveways and access? So those were sort of the broader topics that we use to sort of group parking standards. Look at them all together and sort them out and figure out, okay, which ones of these can we delete, which ones can we build from or burn from and put into our overall parking chapter? And then this column C here is our action column, or excuse me, column D, which is a recommendation. And so that gives us essentially four basic options. One is to retain the standard, to modify the standard, move it, or to delete it. So pretty simple. So I'll get out of that. So just in summary, we identified 60 standards that can be moved or deleted from various parts of the code. We've also attempted to align as much as possible all of the parking standards within not just Title 19, but parking standards in other, or our parking standards with other standards in the Everett Municipal Code, for example, streets and driveways in Title 13. And we believe we're going to be achieving our code-streaming objectives, and I just put together a fun little, you know, sort of, how are we doing kind of a matrix here. And this goes back to the criteria that I was just talking about a minute ago. So for duplication, we think with eliminating a lot of those standards and cross-referencing and combining things into an overall parking standard in the parking chapter, we've really helped reduce bulk and volume. We think we have a better organizational structure, which makes it easier to search and locate parking standards. The user interface part, that's sort of still to be determined, because we got a lot of work to do on code streamlining, but signs thus far are pretty good. We think we've cleared up a whole lot of inconsistencies, so we're achieving the consistency objective. We're making the code easier to implement, and, you know, the land use division is all for that. If we can, you know, basically navigate, make it easier to work with the public on these standards, then that ultimately ends up being a public benefit. And so we think generally we're achieving those overall streamlining objectives. And that is it.